Everyone, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting at five thirty-three P M. Called to order, and let's go ahead and start with the roll call. We'll start with Commissioner Brewer. Mister Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Mead.
Here.
Commissioner Etchgon.
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Couch, and I'm here also. So. Next item is public comment. Public comment will be in accordance with the attached policy. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the planning commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each, and is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts? Sorry. I I promise I'll have it memorized by the end of the year. Thank you. Hold on, I got it. The commission is prohibited from take from by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Prior to addressing the commission, any handouts for commission will be provided to the Commission Secretary for Distribution to the Commission and appropriate staff. The public will have an opportunity to comment on items on the agenda. Once the item has been called and the chair opens the item to the public.
Thank you.
With that said, do we have anybody from the audience that like to address the commission? Looks like no. Any emails, anything like that? No? Okay. All right, let's move on to item number four, approval of minutes from the regular meeting on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Have we had a chance to review them?
Mister Chair, if there's no other comments, I move that we approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote on approval of the minutes from last meeting. Start with Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
And Commissioner Etchagon.
Aye.
And I'm Commissioner Couch, and I vote aye as well. All right, we're gonna move on to item number five. All right, I have a note here in front of me. If I do anything, please help me out. But we are going to. What are those first words?
Be adding a subsequent action item.
We're gonna be adding a subsequent action item for approval of resolution number two zero two-three dash one-three. It, what does that word, sorry? Saying right.
Um, you have to bring it to a vote.
Oh.
So we have to add the action item.
It basically was left off the agenda. We have to bring it to a vote to add it to the agenda tonight. Okay?
Can we get a motion to approve the subsequent action item? If you can call that, uh, commission.
Yes.
Chair.
Yeah, so we'd like to bring this to a vote. Do I have a first to add an item that was not on the original agenda to the action item tonight?
I moved at it.
Okay, so I have, do I have a second? I'll second that. Okay, we will take a vote. Commissioner Etchagon.
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Right.
Commissioner Mead.
Aye.
And Commissioner Couch, and I've, I approve. All right, so we will be adding that to the item.
Perfect.
Okay, so are we going to go ahead and have Steve come up and talk about the item we added, or go ahead and go to number five? What's that? Oh, public hearing for that one we just added? Okay. So, public hearing, um, item number five tentative subdivision map track number nine-three-nine major site plan review number two zero two-two dash zero-two of plan unit development two zero two-two dash zero-one. And, uh, a request by, is it Walthen?
Yeah.
Yes. Walthen Castanos to divide fifty-two point six-one acres and the two-hundred-and-eighty single-family lots and re- and a remainder. Steve, take her away.
Good evening, Commission. Steve Brant, City Planner. Uh, this is a request, as the Chair said, to, um, for a tentative subdivision map. It's also accompanying it is a major site plan review and planned unit development. The project is, uh, fifty-two point six acres and would create two-hundred-and-eighty single-family lots along with a park site, a, uh, some outlots for trails, extension of the, um, storm pond and a remainder parcel. So, um, on the screen you can see the the site, it's most mostly in, uh, Orchard right now. Uh, the APN, it's zoned low-density residential. And, um, there's an existing irrigation ditch that runs along the north side and the west side, and that ditch would be undergrounded and placed underneath where I'm gonna show you the trail is gonna be in the neighborhood. So this is the proposed subdivision, um. It's gonna be developed in two phases. Uh, the green lots, uh, would be phase one, be a hundred-and-fifty-five units, would also include the park and the extension of the basin. Um, phase two is the blue, uh, would be a hundred-and-twenty-five units, and then the remainder parcel, which would be a future future development that's also zoned low-density residential would be, uh, is the gray area. Yeah, go to next slide. Oh, I think you skipped one. There it is. So, um, access points, there's two access points from Bush Street. One would be the new road on the northwest corner. And then, um, Madrid Street already exists as a half-street, um, south of Bush Street, and so that would be wide to its full extent uh, with lots, and then there'd be, um, Oporto Street would be extended, um, for another way into the subdivision, and then down in the southeast corner. There is a stub street, uh, to the east called Athens Street, and that would be a connection. So all of those connections would be made in the first phase of the development. There's a trail that's proposed to run through the, the site, the entire length. If you were to walk, it would be approximately point seven miles, give or take. Um, it goes through the park, it would be about one acre. And again, part of the purpose of the trail is, is a place, we need a place for the, uh, ditch to be undergrounded. So there'd be a, a uh, pipeline underneath, um, the trail and, uh, and then, um, it would, as it gets down to, the pipeline gets down to the bottom, uh, the southwest corner, it would, um, continue west. And then you can see the storm drain basin. There's an existing storm drain basin west of where we're showing the, the new basin. Uh, it's off the screen, uh, but that's the basin that's south of the stadium. So there's a P U D proposed, uh, because the minimum lot sizes proposed are less than the, the standard that's, um, in the zoning ordinance, there's really two types of lots in there because they've got two types of home plans that they're wanting to build, um, what they call Ariat and Madison. The Ariat homes will fit on a minimum forty-two by eighty lot and the Madison forty-two by ninety. Uh, the average lot size is three thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square feet with the smallest one being twenty-eight seventy-six. So, for, for purposes of the ordinance in the P U D, we would say the minimum, uh, lot size is twenty-eight seventy. As you know, we've been talking about minimum lot sizes all this year. This project has been going on during that whole process, so they kind of, in, in, at least in terms of our staff review, both our, our general review and review of this project has kind of gone back and forth together. They were like informing each other. So in fact, um, I think one version of this map was even shown at one of the council study sessions as an example of what we're talking about. And, um, so, um, the, the council did approve the changes, um, to the zoning ordinance. Uh, but even if those, they're not in effect yet, but even if they were, uh, this project would still require a P U D because the minimum lot size would now be five thousand square feet, so. Keep going, the minimum setbacks proposed, uh, ten feet to living space, eighteen feet to the garage. The interior side will be five, the street side will be ten, and the rear would be ten. Those, those are really close to what the standard setbacks are, to just, uh, some. Actually, they're really close. Um. So the homes are designed to meet the front setback requirements, and most of them, when you actually look at the footprints, are gonna have more than ten feet in the rear. So we're, ten feet is the minimum. This sketch shows, um, the sketch shows kind of how the trail and the lots would interact. Um, we wanted to see how the, you know, because every home has a water stub, a sewer line, um, and other things. We wanted to see how that would all work. Um, and, uh, the engineering, uh, team, Public Works, has reviewed this, and they, they're, they're confident they can make this work once we get to the designs phase, because you, you're gonna have an irrigation pipe with all those stub, stub lines going, running on top of it. And then the pictures are pictures of a similar project that Wathan Castanos has done in Clovis that kind of, it was the same situation. They had a ditch, they needed it underground, and so this kind of shows an idea of, of what this is gonna look like when it's done with the wider, uh, trail, uh, replacing a sidewalk in front of the homes. Ten feet wide. So ten, so the, the full trail width is thirty feet, so it'll be twen- ten feet in the middle that's paved, and then, uh, ten feet of landscaping on each side. So these are the variety of homes that were submitted. The, the plan numbers correspond to the square footage of the homes, um. This is probably some of the biggest variety we've seen in terms of types of homes that people can choose from. Um, so we don't think, there's not gonna be any problem meeting the six-pack requirement for variety of homes, and, uh, one of the homes even has a built-in junior accessory dwelling unit, if someone wants to choose that, that design. Um, there is one, I think there is one. One, the smallest home does have a one-car garage. And I think all but two of them are, yeah, all but two of them are, um, two-story. Uh, go to the next slide. This shows some examples of what the homes will look like. Is that, that's not all of them, but that's, that's the, uh, the Madison, uh, homes. And go to the next one. So in your packet, we have the, uh, draft resolution with the recommended findings and conditions. Uh, one of the conditions, um, we've been talking about today, um, with the applicant, uh, condition seventeen requires a a deadline for when the park would be built. We had put in, what's in your packet is have it built by the tenth home. Um, and talking to them today, they're saying that, uh, the play equipment is have, they're having a hard time getting play, play equipment. There's a long lead time right now. So, uh, talking with the city manager, we're comfortable pushing that out to say it needs to be done by the fiftieth home that's built, which is still only one-third of the first phase, so, um, we think that's a reasonable, uh, deadline. So we are recommending approval of the tenant subdivision map, the major site plan review, and the P U D. And, um, because this is a P U D, this project will go to the city council for final approval, so your, uh, vote today is for a recommendation to council. And I'm open for any questions.
Do we know what the average lot size is for the subdivision that it's already there to the, to the east?
I do not know, but it's, it's more than this. It's more than this, yeah. It's, I would, if I was, if you forced me to guess, I'd say it's in the six-thousand range.
The pictures that we're looking at, uh, five feet on the interior, so these artist renditions are actual pictures. That is ten feet between those units, is that correct?
The, the picture, like the bottom left picture? Yeah, that's an actual image in Clovis. So the, the homes they get, that's ten, ten feet between the homes.
Five feet to the property line.
Five feet to property line, and then five feet on the other property line.
And then the, the back, the walkway. You say that's, uh, ten feet and then ten on each side for landscaping?
So that, and that landscaping will be part of the, uh, community facilities district, so it'll be, so it won't be maintained by the property owner, it'll be maintained by, um, a landscaper that is contracted with the city.
What about trees?
There'll be trees in it.
Between the street and the sidewalk?
Yeah.
I went over and I drove that area. I don't know how many homes are in that area right now. But there are a whole lot of sidewalks with orange paint on them. A whole lot of curb and gutter with orange paint because they have been lifted. Some very significantly by trees. And we've had that discussion a little bit before in the past, that, uh, does this mean we're gonna have two-hundred-and-eighty sidewalks that are painted orange in the next few years? Then why are we putting trees between the street and the sidewalk where we have evidence in this city that they are extremely destructive and extremely expensive? As a property owner, I can tell you, I know this, because I had to replace curb and gutter and sidewalks because of the street tree. And there are a lot of them, and they're dangerous. So why are we doing that?
So I may not be able to change your mind, but I can tell you that we have different standards now. We have a limited number of tree species that we will allow in the parkway. Those are, and we also require, um, um, root barriers to be installed. And so the species that we pick are species that normally the roots go down, not up. And, um, and the root barriers help make that happen. So, um, we're trying to do things that, uh, will prevent what has been happening in the past.
And so this would be the responsibility of the community facilities district and not the individual property owners, is that correct? Just means there's an HOA.
Within the trail, with, within the trail right away, yeah, they'll be, they'll pay, they will pay into the district. And then it'll, it'll be a fund managed by the city.
So the property owner's gonna pay for it anyway?
Yes, but not have to do the actual work.
Because that's, you know, anywhere from, I don't know what it is right now. When I had to do it, it was between three and five thousand dollars, which is a fair amount of change. That's several years ago. It's probably at least double that now, if not more. I'm just thinking it's, uh, is that really a wise decision? That's just a rhetorical question.
I get, I guess the only question I would have is there's some type of rule for the city that they go, you know, we go off of? When he's talking about the trees, I mean, when they spec, you know, these subdivisions, do they, is there something state guideline we have to follow, or we just have something the city put in place, X amount of, you know, trees, plants, things like that? Is there a certain guideline?
We have, we have a standard, there's a list of trees, species, it's only about ten or twelve that we say these are the ones that we will accept in the parkway because we know they have success in the parkway. So some of the trees that have lifted up sidewalks in the past, those trees are not on that list.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know if environmentally there was a, there's some standard, we have to plant X amount of trees every subdivision, or is that just?
No, there's not a standard beyond the city standard, no. I just did. Yeah, so the city standard is to, um, put, to have street trees, um. If the sidewalk, if the sidewalk is adjacent to the curb, then the street tree would be behind it in the, in the front yard. In this case, where there's a trail, you're gonna have ten feet between the curb and the trail. In other subdivisions, some of them that have had the problems, there's usually only five feet between the curb and the, and the sidewalk. So the, the ten feet is gonna give us some, an extra, um, cushion from, from that type of issue. The other thing we require is there have to be cer- they have to be certain distances, because, you know, you've got the water line coming through, you've got the sewer line coming through. They have to be certain distances from that as well.
Do they have a tentative start date?
Uh, the applicant is here, you can ask them that.
Okay, we'll do that. Any other questions for Steve? Okay.
You know, maybe, maybe one, maybe you can answer this, Steve, but, so there's two existing homes right now on the north edge of, of Bush Street, correct?
One of the homes on the site on the far northwest is, was recently removed, and there's just the two oak trees left.
Hmm.
Um, but there's, to the, to the east, eastern edge.
East of that would be not part of this site.
Right, but there's two homes, and then I believe that's a church.
Yes.
So we're gonna have homes that are gonna go right up against these existing homes, if I'm not mistaken?
There's gonna be homes on, um, so right now there's homes facing Madrid, so there'll be new homes that are facing those homes.
Yes, I, yeah, I see there's three lots there on, on that angle, um. Will they be allowed to put a two-story there? My concern is that, and I, I know there's obviously, the homeowners aren't here today, but my concern is putting a two-story there where they can see into the yard of the, these existing homes.
Yeah, I think we've had concerns in the past from the public about a two-story coming up against an existing subdivision there.
Um, if you're talking about the three lots that are yeah, I think it's an angle there.
One fifty, one fifty-one, and one fifty-two.
Yeah.
On the angle, yeah.
The one thing I would say about that is those lots are a lot deeper than most of them, so they're gonna have a pretty decent-sized backyard in between the home and the lot, back lot line. You know, the trails now to the, through the middle.
Yeah, it looks like one of those lot lines is up to a hundred-and-seventy-six feet.
Yeah, so they're gonna have a pretty good.
And they're gonna keep, they're probably gonna keep the, just the same distance from the front, from the front setback, huh? So there's gonna be quite a bit of distance in the backyard there.
I would think that's what they're doing, but if you, if you're concerned about it, you can make a condition to require that they be set forward. Because the zoning would let them put it wherever they want on the lot. But I, I would assume that would be their plan to put it forward.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve?
That, that remaining acreage, is there any, there's just really no plan for that as of right now?
No, I asked, and they don't have a specific plan right now. It, it most likely would be more lots, but, um, you know, that, because that's what it's zoned for now. But they could come back with something else, potentially, and we'll deal with that when, when they propose it.
So, I, I guess that remaining, was it six-point-five acres, it looks like, by five? Are they gonna put some type of wall up, or is it just gonna be open to the neighborhood?
I believe it's just gonna be open right now. But it will have that trail, at least along two sides, and then the street along the other, along the north side.
We are looking at a wall though, around the, the entire project, right?
There'd be a block wall next to the freeway, but it's not required on the west side.
But it'll be on the north side where those existing homes are?
Um. There'll be, uh, it'll be a wood fence, likely.
So are they gonna? They're gonna go off the existing fence that the existing neighborhood has, or they're gonna put an additional fence?
That, well, they'll probably, there'll be a lot of regrading right there because there's a ditch there now, so they'll fill in the ditch and then put in a fence at the property line.
Anything else? Right, at this time, we'd like to open it to the public at six o'clock.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Adrian Burns. I represent the developer Wathan Castanos Homes. I'm their Vice President of Land Development and Fort Planning. Very grateful to be here this evening. It's been a bit of a time coming. The city staff, I just wanna voice my appreciation for our working together and coordination. And the outside consultants that work for the city as well, they've just been great to work with, and you should be proud of them. They really do work for keeping the intent and integrity of the city of Lemoore. And we really enjoyed working together and coming up with some really cool, creative solutions to some of the issues that were raised with the project. Uh, Wathan Castanos is not new to Lemoore. We actually built some projects here before. The Atherton project is one of ours. We had several phases of that, and then we also built a twenty-lot subdivision just off of Bush, just east of this project site. Uh, this site is somewhat of an infill site. It's kind of one of the last remaining sites that hasn't been developed in the area. What we're able to do with this project is connect some key city infrastructure with the project, connect some bike paths and things like that, so we're excited to be able to do that. And then in the end, it'll look like a more finished community or neighborhood in that area. And we're proud to say we are consistent with the general plan, staying within the low-density residential zoning. Uh, we are asking for a P U D. I did wanna make one clarification in the lot sizes. Our smaller lot is forty-two feet wide, but the, we have a larger lot size that's actually fifty-two feet wide. They're both not forty-two, so there is, that's okay. Um, but I just wanted to make that clear, that we do have a larger lot size, and then there is a smaller lot size there. Um, and although we're asking for some concessions on setbacks, we really have, uh, believe that we are making limited to no impacts to the aesthetic of this neighborhood overall, and the reason I say that is we have really maximized the open space, parks, and trailways in this neighborhood. The park is a one-acre park, uh, as Steve mentioned. And it is just full with amenities. It's more amenities than we put in any other of our parks in our subdivisions. Well, we're proposing two different play structures for different ages. We're actually proposing some exercise equipment for some adults, outdoor play games, picnic areas, so it's just loaded with a lot of amenities and activities for a variety of, of ages. The trailways, we're very proud of as well for the connectivity of, uh, pedestrian travel, just for that neighborhood, or even people coming in from other neighborhoods to come in, enjoy that park, do that kind of trailway walk that he, uh, Steve mentioned was point seven miles. Thank you for that. That's, that's an interesting fact. And they can just go around and, and play and see the aesthetic of the neighborhood, which we'll be very proud of. Um, we found opportunity with this irrigation ditch. It was, it's an open swale ditch right now, and we were going to need to underground it and pipe it and put an easement over it. And initially, and put an easement over it. And initially we had talked about, oh, do we put these at the back of the lots? What do we do here? And together we came up with this concept of making this dual use or you know amenitizing this easement basically. And so we have this thirty-foot trailway that uh, as Steve mentioned, will be ten feet of sidewalk, a nice ten-foot swath on either side of that sidewalk for uh, landscape to go in. There will be limited trees, just to talk about the tree concern, because there will be an irrigation pipe underneath. But also we'll stay in line with the tree standards for the city uh, and make sure we have root barriers and the rest of it. We also don't want the sidewalks to be undermined in the future. We'd like to keep it nice and clean and with all the other utilities coming in to serve the homes. We'll be limited to what we can install anyway, but it'll be as lush as we can make it with shallow root plants as best we can. The thing I like about that trail and putting it on the front side of these lots is that impacts about forty-five of the lots. Which now creates an even further setback of these homes as you drive through or walk through this neighborhood. The enhancement of the streetscape really gets amplified. When you do that, you don't have all the homes right up against the street. You now have a whole side of the street that's now set back even further and just creates a more open feel as you you drive through or walk through that neighborhood. Um, we have updated our home elevations and have a mix of architectural styles, colors and variation. We are proposing two product types in here, which varies it even further. I think there's about forty-two to forty-five different home styles that you can get with that list of different product types, elevations and the like. So we're, we're very proud of that, too. We don't like cookie cutter neighborhoods. We're very, we like to have that variety and everyone to feel like their house has their own kind of fingerprint on it. Uh, parking is always a concern in neighborhoods. So again, with the PUD, although we're asking for some reduced setbacks, we wanted to make sure we had sufficient parking, off-street parking available in the driveways. And so we're maintaining that eighteen feet and uh, even on some of these lots, it's likely we'll, we'll push it to twenty feet where we can. Um, we do have some lots that are extra deep just throughout the project. And so we do have some minimum square footages and lot sizes on the list, but most of our average is a little bit above that. And then we have some really large lots, like those ones we were talking about, just adjacent to the properties off of Bush. Um, let's see. Yeah, and uh, we have built these homes in other valley areas, so this isn't all-new product to us. We're building the Ariette-style homes, which are the forty-two-foot-wide lots. We have those in Clovis, Madera County and in Fresno, and we have hundreds of homeowners, very happy and uh, they're well-functioning homes that look really nice and those neighborhoods look really fantastic. If you ever have a chance to go into those areas and take a look at those neighborhoods, they just, they do really well. And again, the big part of that is with the reduced setbacks is having that open space park, trail amenities that they come together as a community meetup and you know, get out and about that way. So I really appreciate your time. Wathan understands um, our responsibility. We have to connect uh, and make livable neighborhoods. And we have a high integrity for what we do and the quality of of product that we've put out there. So I hope you've seen that with projects we've built in Lemoore before. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Burns?
Well, you you were wondering about a start date.
Yes.
We wanna start as soon as we can. So really, it starts with this. Uh, we've you know, the planning part takes quite a bit of time in the background. We're here today looking for that recommendation. We hope for that we can go to council and proceed immediately into improvement plans and final map for that first phase. Ideally, we'd love to start in Q1 of twenty twenty-four, so the first three months of next year is what we have on our schedule, so however quickly staff can move plans through, we will, we will get there and we will get moving on it. So we're, we're definitely motivated to get this going. And part of that first phase, just to reiterate, is the park will be in there, some major storm infrastructure will go in with that first phase. That basin and then a lot of that trailway and the undergrounding of that irrigation ditch will happen all within that first phase.
That two-bedroom, two-bath, the small one that you have, the the smallest one you have. Do you see a pretty good market for that? I mean, would you consider that a starter home, retirement?
I would consider it a starter home for sure. It is not our foregone favorite. It's a, it's a way of, you know, getting someone's foot in the door on buying a home, honestly. It's not the most pop, our most popular are actually the larger square footage ones, but it does offer some opportunity for for some affordability for others to come in and own a home and, like I said, get their foot in the door. You know, hold on to it for some time and then resell it and then move up themselves, so.
So Plan nineteen twenty-seven includes a junior accessory, accessory dwelling in, is that right? Nineteen? How many of those do you think or have planned to put in?
That's actually one of our new plans, but man, there's their demand for it. We, we hear about it almost in every neighborhood we build in. They've asked for these junior ADUs and so we started developing those on the design side just this last year and started kind of feathering those into some of our product lines because there is, people are asking for them. Absolutely.
So because it's a junior, it's actually attached, correct?
It's attached.
It is attached, so it's okay. Is that included in the three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath?
No, I think that's the fourth bedroom to it.
So, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it's an addition.
Oh, it is, okay. So it's its own bedroom, bath.
Correct.
Cooking facility.
Yeah, with a separate entrance even. It just has a shared wall and it does have an inch, you know, you can go into the regular dwelling unit with it, but yeah, it has its own entrance.
Okay, have you entered, have you, I forgot if you said, did you introduce this somewhere else to see if there's a market?
We ju, we just started introducing it into uh, subdivisions that are already going, so we're adding it into those. And then obviously on our new ones, we're providing that.
Okay, and you're seeing it's pretty popular.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. And other builders, you know, they build ADUs and things like that with their, or you know, the multi-gen units, you've probably heard of things like that. And those, those are very on high demand and very popular.
So one of the biggest concerns, I don't mean, is anybody else have any questions or anything like that? One of the concerns, and we've had this come up at other meetings, is um, one of our commissioners here also talked about lot one fifty, one fifty-one and one fifty-two. Is we have two established homes there and it looks like it's owned by the Lee family and um so they're not here, it doesn't look like, but they may come to the council meeting or something like that, or they may not, I don't know, but just looks like a wood fence we put back there. Just some concerns is they've never had anything back there, that agriculture, and now there possibly may be a two-story home looking in the back of their yard for the first time ever.
Yeah.
So.
I understand that, yeah. As a homeowner myself, I understand that and uh, the two stories are a concern. We did intentionally and you know, it actually uh made sense geometry-wise to make those lots deeper and we thought that would be a benefit to those existing homes there. And so those lots are excessively deep. To someone's point, I'm not sure who said it, we would keep the front setbacks as what they are and just gain them all this rear yard backyard, which is really a value to a buyer or some buyer. And so we find that to be very important to keep that backyard as big as possible. So we would keep it close to the front. Uh, and then I can't, I don't know, the dimension to the back, but would, it would be a big backyard compared to where that fence line would be and then adjacent to where that property would be just to the north.
Do you know if those three lots have plans for the two stories, one of, one of the two-story models?
It's, it's most likely than not that it'll be a two-story just for the square footage that people are most likely gonna wanna grab in this product line. Uh, and the fact that we only have two single stories in the whole mix, it's most likely than not that those will be two-story homes. Just cuz someone buying that lot is likely buying a premium for that lot and you know, is gonna be someone who wants to probably build a bigger house. But we're not pre-plodding, so someone could come and say, hey, I just want a single story on this, and that could be a possibility as well.
And just one other question is, it's a little bit off key here. Do you build after somebody has interest and puts down a deposit for the lot, or you just build and sell as inventory comes up?
Uh, no, we, we start with someone coming in. What we try and do is an even flow schedule for our trades. And so if we only get two buyers, we may put in a couple specs is what they call it, just to get like this regular four every month kind of thing. Uh, but if we get four buyers, then we just start the four that the buyers have. We prefer a dirt buyer is what we call it. And so they can pick all their amenities and all the finishes that they want to do. So, yeah, we, we do it that way.
I have no other questions. Anybody else?
Comment, not necessarily a question. Uh, since I raised the issue about the trees, I wanted to say that that thirty-foot area with ten-foot sidewalk in the middle, ten feet of landscaping, looks very appealing. It's just, the trees are a huge issue, okay? And so that's, that's the concern that I have, but I like what you've done with that.
Okay.
I'll make a comment. Forty-two different elevation plans is excellent.
Oh, good.
Yeah, you're not seeing that cookie cutter reach down the one end of the street and you're like, wow, you know, okay.
Yeah, and the six-pack that Lemoore holds true to, we actually do that as a kind of our own company goal when we're in other neighborhoods that don't require that. So I think that's why we have so much variety. And we, we've had some of this product for quite a while and then we add new plans into it just because it's what the market demands and then it naturally creates more variety, which is all a benefit to that community.
In your other projects, do the variety of homes still, are they all still popular? Or do they, or do they tend to pick the newer models?
No, it's, it's just interesting because it really is price point driven on some of these, you know. You get up to that next level, people just can't quite make it there. And so sometimes it's price-driven and then sometimes someone just can pick and choose what they wanna do. So we end up finding a variety anyway. And like I said, we won't, we won't sell the same plan next to each other, same elevation stuff, you know, so we naturally move buyers to something else or move them down the street just to keep that variety going, so, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? No?
Well, I appreciate your time and your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Sir, anybody else from the public that'd like to make a comment? Christie, anything? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment at six seventeen. Commissioners, discussions, anything? Well, there is, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if nobody has any discussion, then I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, recommending the approval of the tentative subdivision map number nine thirty-nine, major site plan review number twenty twenty-two zero two. The PUD number two zero two two zero one, in accordance with the finding conditions with the resolution. Do I have to add anything?
If I, if I may, Chair, the
Yes.
the changed condition that we recommended to go from the tenth home to the fiftieth home for when the park should be done.
It should be ready.
Add that to the
Oh, it should be ready.
Add that to the motion.
You can just add it with the condition of
With the condition of
With that condition.
So we can say the condition of the park to be completed by the fiftieth certificate of occupancy.
With the condition of the park to be completed by the fiftieth occupancy instead of the tenth.
Perfect, excellent. Do I have a second on that big, long statement? I'll second it. Thank you. All right, we'll take a vote. Uh, Commissioner Etchagon.
Hi.
Commissioner Burr.
Bye.
Commissioner Clement.
Bye.
Commissioner Mead.
Bye.
And Commissioner Couch, that's me, and I vote aye as well.
Thank you. So we'll take this recommendation to the city council.
Thank you. All right, move on to item number six, director's report. Nathan.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, not a whole lot on to report out, just uh, Helena, we finally got plans back today, approved plans from Inner West. So now we'll start working on fees so they can get going out there on the ground. I don't know if I said it last month or not, but we did get a tenant improvement for Baskin Robbins over by Kmart. And um, Didi's discount, they're moving through the process. Looks like those plans are are almost complete as well. They're going in over and um, next to the uh grocery outlet. And then I did a special presentation to council on the twenty-ninth of last month, potentially go after uh, some revenue raising ideas. So at the next council meeting, I'll be uh, seeking direction from council on what types of fees or tax we wanna go after as the city in the next election cycle to help raise revenues for the general fund. Thank you.
Nathan, real quick question, how's Kmart going? Are you allowed to say? They weren't.
So they were highlighted by our retail strategies. They've actually had three offers and the owner has declined to entertain any offers on the building. So it's sitting empty right now, um, continuing to work through it. I do have multiple calls into Benderston, that's the property management, to uh, have conversations with them. Because originally they said they were willing to subdivide down to twenty, it's about an eighty thousand plus square foot facility.
Yeah.
They did say they would subdivide into twenty thousand square foot sections, but now they're not willing to do that and they have not entertained any offers, so um, still, still working through that one.
Yeah. What, what about Maverick? Are they getting ready to break ground or anything? It looks good out there. They
Yeah, Mavericks, Mavericks on track. We're still just going through plan reviews and and things like that, but yeah, they should be breaking ground, uh. I, I don't have a date for the ground, but yeah, they're, they're still on, they're still on track. And we also have some other interests in the adjacent property to finish off that subdivision as well. So I did, I did a market tour of the rental company um, last week. Christie and I were out doing a market tour, but it looks like we might be getting a, a nationwide rental, rental uh, equipment.
No.
Potentially coming to town.
Okay.
We're in the, it's us, between us and Fresno, so. But that, they do like this area. Strategically, we're a better location than Fresno, so as long as we can get, get something, get a good deal for them, we should be all right.
Gotcha, okay.
The nineteenth and Bush.
Oh, totally forgot, yes. AMG, the Affordable Housing Project. We did receive the grant for a little over twenty-five million dollars. So that is moving forward. That's the Affordable Housing order by Smith and Oleander. In addition to the grant for the, the project itself, the city will receive about an additional two point five million dollars for off-site improvements. And then CART will receive about a hundred and eighty-six, hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for transportation needs on that development as well. So, so yeah, that was good news.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The nineteenth and Bush site. Is, is that still going through?
Yes, and we're meeting with the developer tomorrow for lunch.
Right, thank you, sir.
Nineteenth and Bush should be coming in October or November to you.
Cuz it, cuz they wanted to make some changes, right? Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item number seven, commission reports, requests, anything, comments? Well, if I could make a comment, um, before we adjourn, um this day, nine eleven will always live in in our hearts and minds, everybody, I can say probably in this room. Um, probably will always remember where they were, what time, what they were doing on this day. Thank you, how many years ago is that? Was it eighteen, two? Yeah. So, um anyways, always keep this day in, in mind and, and the significance of it. So, with that said, I don't think there's any other, yes, sir.
We lost Lemoore.
Oh, yes.
Yep. Well, it's over. I had the opportunity to coach him, that was one loss as well here locally.
Yes, and he was the um Public Works Director, was that right? He retired as a Public Works Director?
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry.
No, nine eleven.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. I was thinking of someone else. I apologize. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. I was thinking of someone else. I apologize. I apologize. Okay, well, thank you. Commissioner Clement. Right, with that, I believe we are finished. We're coming to the end and we will adjourn. At six twenty-four PM. Thank you, everybody.